Thank you. All right, we'll call the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting to order here. Six oh four. And who got started? The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to those standards to support and respect our community. Right, we'll start today with a public comment. Anyone would like to come to do public comment? You can come right up and use this microphone here.
Great, thank you.
Welcome. We'll look for some online participants. If anyone would like to comment, raise your hand. And if you're comfortable, you can give your name and maybe like school affiliation if you have.
Yeah, absolutely. SPS. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Crowley, and I am here as a Situate resident, a member of the Hathaway PTO Board, and a parent of a student at Hathaway School. I would like to express my support for changing the kindergarten entrance cutoff date from September first to September eighth, as proposed in the first reading. There are two key reasons I support this change. First, delaying a child who is ready for kindergarten can create significant financial challenges. Families often face the difficult decision of enrolling their child in costly private programs, sometimes upwards of fifty thousand dollars per year just to keep them on track. This change would reduce that financial strain. Second, and perhaps more importantly, this change ensures that children who are developmentally ready to learn can begin their education in a public school setting where they have access to the resources, structure, and support that are designed to foster their academic and social growth. Kindergarten is a critical year for setting the foundation for lifelong learning, and it's vital that children start their education at the right time with peers who are at similar developmental stages. When children who are ready for kindergarten are held back, they may miss out on the opportunity to gain, be engaged in structured enriching activities that are key to their early development. This can have long-term effects on their academic progress and confidence as they are placed in an environment with peers who are not yet at the same stage of readiness. By adjusting the cutoff date, we ensure that children who are eager and able to learn aren't forced to wait another year. Thank you for considering this adjustment for our community.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in person and no hands raised remotely, we will move forward with our student report. Jane Ryan and Jonah Wright out tonight for us.
Hello, everybody. Welcome back. I hope everybody enjoyed their breaks. Hope everybody had a wonderful Christmas and a happy new year. I hope moving to twenty twenty-five, hope it's a great year for everybody. Uh, for sports update, winter sports are off to a wonderful start. A lot of student athletes participating. Winter track alone has a hundred athletes competing. The following football players were named the Boston Herald All Scholastic Team. Ronan Manning, Lawson Foley, Willie Robinson. Head football coach Herb Devine has been named the Boston Low Coach of the Year, and Lawson Foley for receiving the twenty twenty-four Bill Wilhelm Award for the most outstanding football player on the South Shore. Holiday cards, the freshman class made on College Community and Career Day were mailed out. The three groups of cards were mailed to Bell Two are Boston's Children's Hospital, Situate Senior Center, and Brockton's VA Hospital. Over a hundred DECA students from Situate High School competed in the state DECA meet on Tuesday, January seventh, and Wednesday, January eighth. Several students moved on to states. We're excited to see them. Seniors are currently leading Situate High School for the Class Cup competition. The Class Cup is a competition between freshmen, sophomore, and senior students. Class has well students at Class Cup events win a prize.
And our December Sailors of the Month were awarded to Beatrice Bell, Amelia Merritt, Grady Spinelli, Sasha O'Sullivan, Mrs. Blake, Courtney Goya, and Ben Stone. And these awards are given to people who have been a standout community member at this high school the past month, and anyone can be nominated or nominated. And for guidance news, Step Up Night for eighth grade caregivers is on February twelfth at six P M. And school council directors, Hanny Rundall and ninth grade school captain Katie Levo, will host this night to inform current eighth grade students who will be attending Situate High School next year. The purpose of this program is to share information about high school course selection process and the program of studies with the caregivers. And in other news, the Early College Planning Night will be held on February, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, by the Guidance Department. Councilors will explain the different stages of the college selection application process, and it is geared towards caregivers seeking to get a jumpstart on the college process for new students. In other news, we have another survey go out today about how students feel about WinLock. So we are hoping to have those results to share with you in about a month or so. And I was also wanting to hear from you guys if there's any feedback you would be interested in hearing from students. Any questionnaires that you'd like us to try and put out to either high schools or middle schoolers? You guys can think about it, but any questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you so much. All right, leadership report, Dr. Rapp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're gearing up for a busy six weeks of budget season as we kick off. So just to kind of give a little bit of an overview, at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, I'll be truing up the FY twenty-five, our current budget this year. And so I'll give the committee an update as to where we are in twenty-five, and I'll propose some transfers that will come into line with all the hiring that we've done in the first six months of the year. And then we get right into FY twenty-six. So on Friday, the committee will receive their budget books for FY twenty-six. We finished all of our meetings with stakeholders just before the holidays, and I started putting the budget books together last week, and I'll have them done by Friday. You can pick them up, and that'll give the committee two or three weeks to take a look at them, take your time, go through them. Any questions that you have, obviously reach out, and we'll talk about them. And then we have a whole series of meetings scheduled to keep the public informed, keep the committee informed, keep everybody understanding what's going on. And right now, we have meetings scheduled for Saturday, February first, Monday, February third, the following Monday, the tenth, and then Mr. Burka and I are also presenting to the Select Board on Tuesday, the eleventh, and the Advisory Board on Thursday, February thirteenth. So there's lots of opportunities for committee participation. There are a lot of opportunities to be heard about the budget. The one thing, as I was beginning to think about all these meetings, is, and I remember last year, we had our meeting on Saturday morning, and we had our meeting immediately the Monday night. To me, it seemed a little bit redundant, and I didn't know the whole history there, but it just seemed like I was giving the same presentation twice. And I didn't know if there was any discussion or consideration of perhaps not having the Saturday morning meeting and doing the February third as the budget night. You could dedicate the whole meeting to the budget. I'm sure Mr. Lynch would be thrilled with that, and, you know, give you a break. And this way, you know, we could do the whole meeting, same public participation, same information, nothing's changing, but it might allow us to truncate it a little bit. So just a thought to put out there. We want to hear people's money and notice if we weren't going to have it. But I really think I can give the same information on the third and not have to meet on Saturday morning as a separate morning. But that is a decision. So I just wanted to make a thought. To me, anyway, it just seemed kind of redundant.
I just have a question about that, because I think a lot of, some people come to the Saturday morning. They hear about the budget, and then they ask questions on Monday. Did away with the Saturday meeting. They might want the budget beforehand, you know, a copy of the budget to look over.
Which I could put out. I mean, you know, it would just be putting it out before the committee necessarily has had a formal explanation. You know, I would certainly, and I'm speaking off the top of my head, but I could certainly put a draft out on the twenty-seventh if that, you know, a week ahead of time. If that would help people be able to take a look at it. It's just putting it out there without any context, which is hard, you know.
Would like draft.
It would, absolutely. I'd draft all over. But, I mean, that's a thought. I mean, just, you know, we're having a very free discussion.
I'm only wondering, and maybe there's a way to build it in somewhere else. My recollection is that even though it was a little bit repetitive, I felt like between Saturday and Monday, there were some ahas. And you, I remember you made some changes, you bolded some things, you wrote some things. And so I'm just wondering, how do we build that piece in? It doesn't mean we have to have a Saturday meeting, but like where does that fruitful discussion come so that you get the feedback from us so that then when you present it, it's like the feedback, right? Like the one that has the feedback?
It will be, I mean, I'm speaking way freely here because Mr. Burka, and I haven't had this discussion. But it did be prepared by the twenty-seventh. So there's no reason why I couldn't do, not a whole public presentation every line item, but I certainly could do more than an overview, but not every line. Somewhere in the middle on the twenty-seventh as part of the budget update that might allow for that.
Oh, on the month, so in two weeks?
In two weeks, yeah. I mean, because it's, it'll, by Friday, it'll be ready. So, you know, I could certainly do that, and that would buy the time.
Yeah, that would give us the.
Um, when you said we have a meeting on the third and the tenth, is that a school break? I would have scheduled school meeting. So we also have that, right? Stayed the twenty-seventh, third, tenth. There, so I imagine some of what Carrie's mentioning can also, yeah, a little runway.
Yeah, I just think that process wasn't foreclosed.
I agree with you, yeah.
I could certainly present on the twenty-seventh.
I also wouldn't say that the Saturdays have been overwhelmingly attended by the public. So, that's the other thing. If we were getting a lot of people in the room, I would say, oh, this is clearly a time that works. But it doesn't seem like it's a time that works. Busy, busy time.
Busy stretch.
That's exactly it. Something that I got a few years ago, inherited, it was already a Saturday, people came. There was a good turnout, and I think it was, you know, we're curious, there was a new leadership team, new school community numbers at the time, and turnouts were pretty significant. And then for the last few years, they've just kind of gotten smaller and smaller. I don't know the last two years if we had one or zero. I think we had zero, zero public attendance at both meetings. We had more on the Monday afterwards. So that's where the conversation with Tom and I came because it was basically the same presentation, just trying to get the community another bite at the apple, if you will. That's why Tom's rolled out a number of meetings. So if the community's wondering, why are you getting more in budget being that's really important? It is, however, it can still be done. There's many opportunities. One other thing, too, is that the budget, school committee, subcommittee will be also meeting with us, which I believe is Ms. Fenwick and Mr. Gates, probably get something out tomorrow to turn it for next week and kind of give you a little preview of that as well. I don't get the school committee asked more detailed questions. So that piece of it's also going on behind the scenes. So if you have questions, you want to funnel through them, that's also an opportunity to do that. So we wanted to make sure that it didn't impact the community, so we looked at the attendance. It was void of, last few years, sampling wasn't there. Monday was better attended, but I do like the opportunity to, that we can do a snapshot at twenty-seven. This could be even better, trying it this way, earlier in the process, snapshot, get more questions, more feedback. Also meet with the subcommittee, get their feedback, so then take a red pen to it, you know, like it's like a scrimmage. Practice, and then we usually evolve so that we get to the final presentation. It's a good final draft, which then goes to the Select Board, and to the Advisory, and then to Tom. We also, one thing that we started a few years ago for the community to know that we've got really strong feedback on is the Blue Book, we call it. It's the real comprehensive, you know, kind of like practical explanation of where the money's spent in narrative form with charts and other things that we found is helpful for people to understand. It's a bunch of charts and numbers. So I think that that's the final thing. And we post all presentations up on the website afterwards. We do take questions and receive a lot, but we do receive questions in between presentations from the community directly emailing to us. No, I have a question on this, or I'll tell them, can you send me that chart or what does it mean? So I don't think there'll be any decrease in community involvement.
I think we would just want to make sure since we're doing the Situate TV that we, every week, just remind folks that it's the two.
Good, yeah. I'll put it in Thursday class as well.
Yeah, maybe even so the twenty-seventh, so we put startups are doing a little budget line or two in our updates.
That'd be a good agenda item for the budget until February two.
All right, do you need any formalized approvals from us of any kind?
Only such that we're canceling the meeting on the first. The meeting on the twenty-seventh is already scheduled.
All right, I think we're all in agreement, agreement that that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as like Carrie said, we've done this, we've kind of baked that into the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. All right, Assistant Superintendent Lynch.
Thank you. So this is the yearly update on professional development. So I put together a few slides just to walk through a little bit about what's happening with PD and where we're headed this year. So the first slide just talks a little bit about the core beliefs that, why we do professional development, because our teachers and school leaders have the most significant impact on student achievement and their well-being. So in order for us to support students, we need a well-supported staff. So that's, that's the course alignment with our strategic plan and district goals. We also prioritize collaboration, that teachers work best when they can work with one another. And with other teams, and a really important part of our professional development is also collecting feedback. So after our staff have a professional development day, our professional development committee solicits their feedback, and then we analyze it together to think about what improvements we might need to make. And lastly, I would say one of the most critical things we do is that we use the expertise of all our school department leaders. So for example, on November fifth, many of our department chairs and curriculum coordinators who are here tonight led their departments, some K- twelve, some six through twelve, in like a full day of professional development. Takes a lot of planning, takes a lot of coordination and collaboration. And where we really appreciate the time for our teachers to be able to work together with the expertise of the department leaders, curriculum coordinators in order to advance our district goals. So I think we're very well situated to accomplish our district goals because of the leadership we have on those days. In some districts, when you don't have those positions, it's hard to move forward. But I really feel like we know that that's a key part of it. So those are our key beliefs. This is just a reminder about our other professional leadership committees. This was something that was in place. It's been in place, it seems like, for five years at least. And some of the work has changed a little bit. I'll just highlight a couple of the committees, like the MTSS District Committee that we have, Gates and its year-two implementation of its work with S-three in the Rennie Center. Jenkins is in year one, working with their coaches. So we're making steady progress toward our district goal around multi-tiered systems of support. We also have our Professional Development Committee, which I'll speak a little bit more about. But these are all ongoing committees. Right now in the district, our District Lit Committee, sometimes referred to as the DLC, is visiting faculty meetings and sharing the equity audit that was conducted several years ago to talk about what specific actions we're taking based on the equity audit. So while you may not see specific professional development happening on one of the four contracted PD days, I'd just like to share that this is ongoing learning that's happening over the course of the year. And these groups are constituted by school leaders, our department chairs, our teachers, our association president. So just wanted to kind of highlight the other ongoing work that happens. And one of the ones that sometimes gets overlooked, I think, is the Mentoring and Introduction Program. We have, Ms. Pastor and Ms. Fidler are running the Mentoring and Introduction Program this year. And along with our mentors, they meet monthly. They're supporting our new staff, and there's a lot of excellent work happening there. So those are just some ongoing committees that support the staff with their professional learning. One specific group that is focused on professional development is the PD Committee. It, just as a reminder that we meet monthly, teachers, department chairs, curriculum coordinators, association representation, we plan professional development time, analyze the survey. We will share a draft of the school calendar with the Professional Development Committee to gather their input on it as well as is prepared by the school committee. Then there's a smaller council that does a little bit more of the brass tacks work to make, as you can imagine, a committee of about fifteen to twenty, sometimes hard to move. So that's the charge of the Professional Development Committee. And I think the committee works really well together, puts in a lot of work to try to design experiences for our staff. This is just a representation of the work that's, that happens at those four different full professional development days over the course of the year. I would highlight that for November fifth, we did, Megan Gregory led the Science of Reading Professional Development for K-one. That's also going to happen for grades two and three in March. We had some changes in the requirements for IEPs that Dr. Gobert ran, both in August and in November. Like I mentioned, that our department meetings for our six-twelve departments and our K- twelve had a really good chunk of time to make progress. Our administrators attended the required Title IX training for the updates that were valid for November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll have another training coming up soon to make sure that we're all trained on the current regulation. Our district nurses also meet on that day with Kelly Bell and engaging professional development, as well as our related service providers. So it's, I just appreciate sharing all the different groups. And Kelly Bell also organized CPR and first aid training for staff at every school so that a minimum of five people in every building have received certification in CPR and first aid. And we really appreciate the efforts of Situate Fire to come in, to give a day, to make sure that we have that training. And there's the outline for March eighteenth as well about what's up and coming. We are engaging in some more grade-level collaboration. I don't think I highlighted this initially, but I think one thing that's a little bit different from our previous model is that we prioritized, I think, a lot of choice for educators, and that's important. And I think the Professional Development Committee has come to the conclusion that we also need to ensure that people are sort of growing in the same direction on district goals. And sometimes that requires us to say, okay, we have year two of science. We all need to work together on science. We have year one of the math implementation. We really have to choose to all work toward this goal. So I think staff have worked very well with that understanding, and the feedback we received sort of reflected that. So I'm not sure I highlighted that earlier, but I should have.
Is that what's happening, March eighteenth for middle and high?
That's, that's correct. So for March eighteenth, this is the second iteration of meeting together for their department goals. They'll continue that work on March eighteenth. We do have a group that's working on, related to the Emergency Operations Plan, that's going to do some threat assessment training. That group doesn't involve a lot of teaching staff, but that's going to be the focus for March eighteenth. And we, when the school year is a hundred and eighty days, and it seems like we have a lot of professional development time, but I also, teachers really do use this, the time well to make progress on the goals that they have. So we're very fortunate to have those two days in the course of the school year. Some next steps related to professional development, just in my listening, from, since I started the position there, we'd like to work together to make a comprehensive, multi-year professional development plan that aligns with, continues to align with the strategic plan. I think we have a good focus for this year, but we want to think about what's happening two years out, three years out, because we should know when we're moving forward with new curriculum resources and to think about that, just like we do with textbook adoptions and things like that. We're working on building up our mentoring, coaching, and leadership development programming. Superintendent has spoken about some opportunities that staff have related to that, and we'd like to expand that to more of our staff to grow our internal leadership capacity and also provide our staff with ways to take advantage of the high-quality professional development that's being run internally to reward PDPs in line with DESI. I think there's a real opportunity to just recognize people for the work that they're doing and help them get PDPs they need to maintain their license. So we're working on outlining that. So those are just some next steps we have related to professional development, staff development.
I really like the focus that you have on the mentoring, coaching, and leadership development. I think that's really important. So I like the collaborative approach that our district has with the committee. And I know that the data in the past has at least shown, you know, high levels of satisfaction. So that's great. Hopefully that's continuing. But I was curious, as we think about developing the calendar and the budget, if it feels like the amount of days that are in this year's calendar are the right amount of days? I know we've kind of experimented in the past, half-days and full-days, and where are they following the school year? I was just curious if you or the committee could at some point share with us, as we're thinking about the calendar, is that the right spread and the amount of time? And similarly, in the budget, I'm not sure what types of things we're paying for. Are we stiffening teachers when they are leaving PD for their peers? Are we having outside providers come in? I was just curious to like kind of understand a little bit more about what needs to be in the budget if you all feel like it's inadequate.
So one thing I would say is that the proposed calendar that's, to my understanding, that's being shared at the next school committee meeting, that's being taken to the PD Committee on Thursday. So they have an opportunity to ask the same questions, I think, that you just referenced. So their input will be reflected. So I'll take those questions to them, and many of them are here so they can get ready to provide their feedback. I would also say my anecdotal feedback about the amount of time. One thing I take away I had from November fifth was we met after that, and people, teachers really appreciated the collaboration time. And then there was conversations that we should, you know, some ideas about, we love it so much, we should bring back half-days. We love opportunities to work together. And I think we just all sort of said, let's see how the year goes. We have another professional development day, and we will design it for that collaboration. And I don't know if it means we need half-days. So that was a little bit about the early conversation around that. So that was just, but I'll collect it this Thursday and make sure it's reflected in the budget.
This might be off-topic, but I'm curious, as we look at this schedule, and we know we have multiple years of new curriculum, how does rolling out curriculum align or not with the PD collabor/ slash collaboration schedule just to support teachers as they're rolling those new things out?
It's a good question. And in one, in one way, I think it's reflected, and this is our communication from the PD Committee. We talk about balancing choice and achieving like near-term district goals. So we articulated in our plan, so everybody like signs up for that professional development so we can track it. But we articulated in our plan this year that, for example, in the, in the math department, social studies, science, who have very, are very close to their, either piloting or adopting or have just completed year one of implementing, that those departments have to work together on the Professional Development Day. And really, there's not any choice because of the district goal. So if we have a longer-term plan, I think it will clearly state that if you're a social studies teacher next year, you would expect that you would be engaged in department-based heavy lifting, just like you are this year as you pilot and select texts. And perhaps if you're farther along in your curriculum cycle, year four or five, that there could potentially be more choice. Perhaps you'd be engaged in something related to other more widespread efforts. So that's a general answer, I would say, that we just recognize that, I don't know how you could advance the work in your department with the curriculum implementation unless you had everybody at the table. And so we just, that's one thing. And then I think there's also a second piece of curriculum coordinator, department chairs, and principals have advocated for some amount of funding for professional development in the budget. Some of that occurs over the summer, too. So I think there's another component where we're asking people to do work in a paid capacity outside of the school year. So that might be another way to accomplish some of our goals as well.
I think just sort of in line with what Maria is saying around the budget, I think it would be really nice for the community to see, because it's really glaring in the budget when you see curriculum purchase. I think the piece that would be really interesting would be to pair that with the collaborative time, the PD time, so that the community can see that this isn't us just buying curriculum, that we're also supporting our amazing teachers with, you know, the skills, the time that they need, because a book is a book. It's the teacher that's really, you know, making the magic happen at that point. So I think showing the full picture of that would be really helpful.
I agree.
Because another question I have about this, too, is is it enough? Is that what teachers are saying with big rollouts like math being such an, you know, important subject? And rolling it out while kids are learning it simultaneously with what they've learned in the past, now learning things new? And teachers are learning it at the same time. Feedback and just curious if they feel like as we do these, we get better at doing these cycles that is going to swing around to the next, whatever the next one is that's up for review. And so how, what are we learning from rolling these out more consistently as a district and sort of like feedback from teachers? I suppose even students would be helpful and great. And that and another question about that sort of, my other question on that is sort of similar to what Carrie just asked. But I was kind of honing on on, for example, M T S S. When we roll that out, year two at Gates, now year one at Jenkins. When and how does this then go full district and what does that look like? That's another, a different rollout even. And how much PD goes into that?
Yeah, and that's, that's our next stage is to begin to form a district committee that's going to support our other, you know, next year, three elementary schools as they engage in the work. And then obviously, it will go to, you know, three total. But that's our, that's our next phase. Our curriculum coordinators currently attend those at the elementary level to try to spread the capacity as well as Principal Huldak is there. And I now it is, we're talking about how to develop consistent practices for all of the other schools. So that's exactly the the point that we're at.
Good. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much. All right, we have up next our Celebrate Student Learning presentation with Ms. Simonak, our math department chair, and Ms. Allen, our K to five math department chair.
Yeah, I'm sure while they get set up, can I just finish up on a leadership report that someone wasn't on there?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
It wasn't on there, so I thought.
Yeah, no problem.
Probably more or less because of the budget talks. I think the soft skill that goes unseen in a lot of budgets, people start seeing around this time of year when you see newspaper articles, you'll see some, you'll see some things get a little tight. They are pretty much everywhere. There's relationships between school committees, flat boards, town administrators, superintendents, and such. And I would say, although there's, you know, grievance disagreements and things like that, I think I'm part of the fact that we spent a lot of time working on those relationships. Part of that is the financial forecast, the way that's set up, those conversations are very transparent. And so part B of that is just an example we're going to share tonight about grants. So we're, our new technology team is really working on our cybersecurity and our safety so that we can act. And we've been applying for a lot of grants. We applied for one alongside the town. The town had gifted us their portion of that cybersecurity money. So I just wanted to share a letter of grant to Mr. Boudreau and leadership team of the town. Dear Mr. Boudreau, thank you for your continuous support of the Citro Public Schools' efforts to pursue alternative funding sources. Your assistance and willingness to take on extra work have been invaluable to the success of many of our grant applications. We are especially grateful for your recent decision to support granting Citro Public Schools the full Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, M I I A, grant. Additional funding of approximately $8,000 will be dedicated to enhancing the cybersecurity of the town's schools. This initiative is a testament to the strong collaboration among the town's departments directly influenced by your leadership, sincerely, William Burke. So I wanted to show one thing that most people might not hear, but I wanted them to hear about this. That those are just good gestures that, you know, Mr. Boudreau, you know, we needed that help, that we have some work doing that area. So just a thank you to Mr. Boudreau and and the support and our team at Town Hall. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you.
Hi, Eric. Hi.
Hi, I'm Charles Simonak. I am the new math department chair, six through 12.
And I'm Heather Allen, the elementary curriculum coordinator.
We are just here to talk a little bit about math, K to 12. One of our big beliefs is that math is more than just numbers, right? There's more to it. There's problem solving, critical thinking, collaborating, decision making, applying the math, modeling the math, using analyzing data, using it to make decisions. And those are all things that we focus on in our classrooms. In addition, we use the data that we gather from our benchmarking, whether it's formative or summative, to ensure that students are meeting the standards and gaining the skills necessary to be successful with them.
So our goal here in Citro, K to 12, is to provide support and extension for students based on how well they're performing. So thinking about classroom performance, what does their data look like? And make sure we're providing the supports that they need or the extension that a student may require. And also, a belief is that we have to make sure that we're using effective instructional practices based on the grade level, based on the content that we're teaching, standard student needs, making sure that we have all of those in place to make sure students are successful within the classroom, K to 12. So the core programs that we're using, you've seen this before for the elementary, Eureka Map is our core curriculum. And then we're using ST Map as a supplemental chart. Eureka is our core program and ST Map is our supplemental program. Combining that with teacher, their lens and sort of their artistic ability, that will be our curriculum.
And we know we have a new program this year, grade six through 12 math, and it is Envision that we're using. The company that the publishing company is Sabas, so I might interchange the words as I go through. But that is the materials that we have, our Envision math. And then we use iExcel both supplementally, but we're also using it as our benchmarking tool for definitely through grades six through eight. And I know that the specialists are using that to support student learning.
Benchmarking in elementary K to five, all of our students are assessed three times per year. K to four has the universal screener for number sense. That's just thinking about backfluency and just a general, you know, sense for like founding skills. And then we use STAR map for grades two to five to assess all of the domains and standards within their grade level.
For grade six through 12, as I just mentioned, we use iExcel to benchmark. Grade six through eight, they're, that's two, three times a year. For the high school, we use Coursely Common Assessment at the midyear and the and the final exam time. So those are upcoming in the high school in about a week or so. So that's something to look forward to.
So after beginning of year assessments, we are right in the middle of midyear assessments at the elementary level. That's why we're still holding on to those beginning of year. At the end of the week, we'll have fresh data. But after looking at beginning of year, here are sort of the trends that jumped out. Eighty-five percent of our students in kindergarten in grade one met or exceeded the benchmark using the universal screener. Twenty-nine percent of students in grades three to five are predicted to exceed expectations on MCAS as predicted by STAR. And thirty-four students are predicted to not meet expectations on the state benchmark as predicted by STAR. Now, you're probably like, how do we know this? There is, STAR is able to accurately, within reason, predict. And we compared last year's prediction to last year's MCAS data, and it's pretty much spot on. We, they sort of overpredict, so they're, the amount of students who who did not meet benchmarks was almost half of what they predicted last year, which is telling me that we are identifying students who are struggling, we're putting them in appropriate windows, and then we're bumping them up. So here, if it says thirty-four, I don't know the exact number from last year, but it would have been about seventeen, who didn't actually need it. So we are using that data to really target students and the skills in the area that they need to give them a push. So we'll be really digging in and making sure that students are getting what they need.
Can we ask a quick question? Is the, so the twenty-nine percent that are predicted by STAR to meet, or sorry, to exceed expectations, that's the top category. Is that a very big jump from last year?
It's about the same.
Is it? I didn't, I didn't remember that.
I don't know the exact numbers, but considering my last year, it wasn't, I, it wasn't like a big jump. I can get those at some point, but I don't know.
It seems, I'm not remembering it. I can look it up, too.
It's also, think about the data that was presented at the beginning of the year was separated by grade level. So once you combine three to five, the number's not the same.
And just to clarify question on STAR there, so it exceeds, meets, does not meet?
Yeah, there's four, there are four categories. I just want to make sure I read some.
Meeting, approaching, and below.
So for STAR, it's exceed, it needs, needs improvement, that, right?
So twenty-nine percent are exceeding a midyear. Okay, and then, yeah, I guess I'm curious, yeah. I'm curious just who the meeting percentile, percentage.
Sorry, I think Heather included those numbers in the panic section.
They're not combined by three to five. That's the main, we can have the end there and separate it out.
Okay.
So for grade six through eights, some of the trends that we noticed, we combined all grades, that about over forty percent of students in grade six through eight are at or above grade level on the beginning of the year benchmark, same. Grade seven and eight are going to do a midyear benchmark, probably in the next week or two. Grade six will want to do one at the end of the trimester. So we did have that information to look. We could see that the percent of sixth grade students at or above grade level has increased by ten percent in the first trimester alone. And as I previously mentioned, the grades nine through 12, of course, like midyears are happening, starting January 23rd. So we don't have any, the teachers right now are working on, you know, making sure that they align with standards. And then we just don't have that data yet. We won't, but just.
So can you remind me the timing of the six to eight benchmark? Was that September?
So in the beginning of the year, it was in September. I don't remember the exact date, but it's in September. And then we will do one in around the same time as the midyear, right? Like to the midyear point for the for the high school, right around there. I'll open up the benchmark timeline again.
So it, as in your expert sort of opinion, when you look at beginning of a year assessments and sixth grade is fifty-eight percent of the students are below, below or far below, what are you thinking at that point?
At that?
What are you thinking about the students in Citro at that point? Like those, like what is, what comes to mind for you? Are you concerned? Are you, is that what you expect? Is it, I'm just really wondering.
I mean, to be honest, because it's my first. Here, I don't have anything to compare it to. It's from last year, so I don't have like anything to really compare it to.
Right, because you're new to the district.
I mean, I mean, no, I mean, I don't feel concerned because I feel confident in what my teachers can do and and how they work with students and how they support students. I mean, I think the information, it gives us information about sort of how to guide our instruction, right? Like where are the areas that we need to really focus in on or where we need to support students? And our specialists use that data to provide the tier two and tier three supports that are necessary. But it can also guide in the tier one supports, you know, and and what we're doing just in our classroom on our own. So it it doesn't, it doesn't, honestly, it doesn't really worry me. I mean, it makes me happy to see that 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 obviously what is happening in the classroom is working as students are increasing. And so I look forward to that for the, you know, for the rest of the year. I foresee that happening. Yeah.
I ask, I ask because you're new to the district. I also ask because as school committee members, we spend a lot of time as parents and family with other families communicating. And I'll be quite honest with you, as a non-expert in this area, when I see a number like that, I hit the panic button. It feels panicky. And so that's why I'm asking the experts in the room, like, what's the story I should be telling myself about a beginning of the year below grade, far below grade benchmark? How do I make, how do, how do I contextualize that and make sense of it? I also think elementary-wise, beginning of year, and we actually had a meeting discussing this today, doesn't always give you the most accurate picture. So think about when you're giving that assessment, it's coming right off of summer break. There's a little bit of summer slide. We're getting rid of cobwebs on these skills that they're learning. So I I would encourage us to look at end of year data when they've like consistently received strong instruction. See where they are then as opposed to the beginning of year. I know we're presenting you new year data, so it's tricky, but I think we should keep that in mind, too, in here, like the timing of the assessments.
Can I ask a question about Excel and just how it works? So, all right, Excel, I should say. The beginning of your benchmark, is that, the benchmark, is it a moving target as the year goes by? So like at the beginning of the year, we're not assessing them on where they're supposed to be at the end of the year and watching them grow towards that, right? So at the beginning of the year, that makes me think that we would want to see a lot more kids at a higher level at the start of the year. And it makes me wonder, like, I I saw this and I was like, maybe we should be doing a little more during the summer, like this, if it is really summer slide. And I was also thinking, next year, we should have you come after. You have middle of year data, because it is really tough to go on beginning of year. But but to be quite honest, I also hit the panic button when I saw this because I'm like, wait a second. This isn't like what we want sixth graders to know at the end of sixth grade. This is what we want sixth graders to know coming into sixth grade. And so then I'm like, oh, what, what's going on here, you know? So that was one thing I wanted to ask. And I also was curious as to, and you might not know this, Tara, since you are new in the role, but like, do you, do you know whether iExcel is also predictive of MCAS? And is it like STAR is?
I need to look into if it's predictive. I have not seen that yet, but that doesn't mean that I don't have more.
Uh, yeah, I was.
I dig deeper into it to look into it.
Be curious, because I do think it's helpful to have, you know, since MCAS, we obviously don't get the data until next year. And there's a lot of problems with that. But if we do have a tool that lets us at least see what's coming down the pike, I think that's tremendous. You know, I'm not sure what to think, honestly, about the iExcel. I'm just, yeah, I think it is.
AI says it's highly predictive, but I don't know.
I did some research, and I didn't see that of an AI, and I wasn't sure. But Ryan, maybe you want to jump in.
Sure, I just, I think you'll see if the, if you look at the fifth grade data versus the sixth, there's sometimes a discrepancy between what it would, STAR would report is happening at the end of fifth grade and then after
Right.
sixty days in sixth grade. You could get a much different number, but I think all of the questions point to the work that we're doing, especially in secondary, to try to identify consistent benchmarking system. I know this was a goal last year, too. And we have a new program in place. And as we use the the program, I think teachers, Tara may be talking about this in in a few minutes, but like, they're definitely trying to figure out what's the most effective way to benchmark, to make a benchmark schedule, and to use some of the assessments that are also in the program. It would be, I was new in my role this year here. We have a new sort of math department chair and and to get the program implemented was a significant lift. And that's been off to a strong start and then the work now as well. How do we monitor the implementation? And I think maybe Tara can put that a little bit more about the work that iExcel was in place before in terms of a benchmark. And we are, you know, actively determining the 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 right schedule at which to give it six through eight and the the right tool to use without outrunning the teachers. So I think it's a, all your questions are exactly the kind of work that the department's looking at.
I would also be curious if with new rollouts like this, feedback from the students would be important, you know? Something that I know as a parent of a 10th grader who's part of the new rollout is if we're not kind of benchmarking where the kids are at as they're sort of learning the new curriculum here, there's a little bit of a big space between. there's a little bit of a big space between, there's a lot of information and material being given at once and not a lot of check-in with the kids to know if it's actually being absorbed without a lot of time in between assessment. There's no time to sort of catch up. So maybe like increased kind of benchmarking or checking in would be helpful.
Well, that, that connects to a question I had. The, I, I, I think this is a great discussion and I think we're asking it because we're interested in pushing, but we also again get lots of questions in the community, so we're trying to understand the stories. And I think related to Nicole's question is, you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, you know, the data is critical for supporting students and matching to their skills. And you mentioned, you know, you get them in the wind blocks and they move. So can you help us understand, so if the beginning of the year assessment, we shouldn't hit the panic button, it could be the timing of the test, which I totally get, they're coming back to school, they're not necessarily in the right headspace yet. What's the follow-up from the initial set, those benchmark that you're able to say, you know, student A didn't do great on the, the beginning of the year assessment, but they're doing, we just did this thing and now I'm like, okay, they're settling in. Like, can you help us understand that process?
Sure. So we do progress monitoring at the elementary level. So every wind group that we have has a focus area. So it's a targeted focus specifically for that group of students. So if we have a student who are struggling with place value, so we're going to, we took the data from the beginning of your benchmark. This is their instructional focus for that group. And it's going to be, it's constant progress monitoring, sort of through an end of lesson sort of quick check-in, either just orally back and forth with the teacher, or they might have like a quick assessment written. And then it's going to be a constant cycle of checking in. And usually it's a six-week cycle. They'll do a, they'll do that sort of informal progress monitoring, but then they're also going to do progress monitoring on STAR to check where they are. And it's like a, you're saying, constant, because it's constant that they're doing this. And if that student has met the goal of that group, then those groups are going to be redone. And this is happening several times between beginning of year and middle-of-year benchmarks. And that happens in that, that's just sort of our cycle that we go through with these winters. Now, if there's a kiddo who's just not getting it, then they also maybe shift it out to another group, staying on the same focus area, but maybe they need to just try a different approach or a different teacher or a different method. Maybe they need to go revisit it on S T M. There's all different things through it. It's a constant looking at the data through our weekly meetings with teachers and math specialists to see how is it going and moving kids along and shifting.
It does, I'm just curious, how does that translate into the middle school and into the high school?
It's still work we're working on in the high school, but in the middle school, we have tier-two and tier-three supports available. It's a little bit, I feel like it gets kind of tricky because the schedule is a little bit more set at those, at those levels. But the math specialist did a very nice job of looking at the data. I mean, not just the benchmarking data, but also looking at the common assessments that the teachers give and working with students individually on their needs. And they do, I know, I'm going to say it, but they do use iExcel to help sort of focus in, sorry, Nicole. But they do use iExcel to focus in on skills and supports. Or they'll do the wrong teacher-created things if they think that they need more support in another way. They look at it at the end of the trimester and sort of see who needs to move and who needs to shift. That's not to say that if in the middle of a trimester, something was going on with a kiddo, I'm not sure with a kiddo, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't automatically, you know, go to administration that we need to, we need to do something, something's not going down here, we need to move them in, out, around. I mean, and conversely too, if someone's meeting with great success and whatever. I mean, try to be as fluid as possible with the constraints of the secondary level scheduling. Which is, and then just to be honest, it's something we're still working on at the high school level, right? We have wind blocks there, working, figuring out how to use them most effectively is always something that we're working on to better, to improve.
I feel like I'm taking too much air.
You're asking things.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm wondering, I feel like at the elementary school, what you described, I, I remember, right? Like that's super transparent, like I just feel very aware. Whereas at the middle school, I'm just wondering like what you described in terms of the specialists, looking at the data and moving things around. Does that happen behind the scenes? Does that happen in collaboration with the families? Or like, what does that look like? Because that to me is, I had no idea that that was happening.
I think, I think both. I mean, and I mean, I think a lot of what's happening during the day is they're working constantly on their data. But I do know that they're reaching out to parents when their data suggests that they need the tier-three supports. I know that they're, that they're working with families for those to, I'm trying, I'm going to keep saying support, but really that's what it is, to support and meet the needs of the students, so.
Yeah, and I think that there's the, when we saw with the professional development along with MTSS, there's the whole child review. Our teams are, have developed like a spreadsheet in the middle school. They meet once every two weeks to look at holistic student data, like not just math performance, but like the HSA, other anecdotal data for strengths and pieces like that. And that's not something that's necessarily shared with parents, like just in terms, there's nothing there. It's just an internal process. But I, once it's determined that if a student is significantly in need of like math support, there's like Tara said, there's the, a specific tier-three intervention where students are placed in a literacy class with the literacy specialists, like an additional math class. I think there's a level-two support where during enrichment block, they receive targeted support there. So I think this, the middle school is really thinking about how to implement those. And the, the data that Tara talked about is, is analyzed by the math specialist. So I think it's two things coming together, MTSS, implementation of a new program, like better use of data. So I think all those things are coming together in this one example.
Can I, I was just going to give an example because we talked a lot about targeting support. When I was talking with some teachers today, it was also for extension, right? So the MTSS is working also to extend. Came out of an MTSS group that maybe some students need some more challenge. And so we have teachers using programs, the new program that we just, just raised this year, to support those students. And they've noticed, it's really nice. Kids feel really good, you know, that they've been able to do that. And they've seen some more confidence from, from students in that extension. So I think we're getting used to data both ways, right?
That's nice to hear. There's acceleration.
Yeah, as well.
I think as a committee and as parents, you can probably sense that there's like a frustration here with, you know, years' worth of data that is, and yet no shift in outcomes for students and some frustrations in what targeted, what to focus on to improve that. I think we all have a collective goal of seeing kids happy and like, at least liking math, if not loving it, enjoying it and like getting it. Because math is so instant gratification stuff, like this is what we all need. And we do love that, but I don't know. I don't know why, I guess like we ask so many questions, but I'm, I don't, I want to, I'm so yearning to see like, yes, we, we did A, B, C, D, check this out, look at these kids, like we've really shifted something, MCAS, whatever it is, you know? And yet you see a lot of flat, you know, when you, especially when you look at the kids over time, it's like, just not seeing a shift in the last several years. You know that we were lower than our comp districts, just to call it out there, in this particular subject area. Let's try this, let's try a new curriculum, let's try PD, let's try, you know, whatever, whatever we need to try, we're here for it. We want to support you, we want to support staff and students. You know, what do you need? What do we need? What, what, what can we do, you know? I guess that's still kind of my, my stuck point on this is, you know.
Well, and I think, you know, in individual conversations that we've had, the troubling thing, and full disclosure, I have a middle schooler, so I haven't, I have, I invested because I'm a school committee member who cares deeply about the talent and I also have a child who's in middle school. I'm just going to be fully transparent. I think the thing that's difficult, and I know Nicole has this with her son, if the timing of curriculum adoption for, you know, her oldest and mine is such that it's during the rollout, they can be impacted multiple years while the figuring out is happening. And oh gosh, if my twins, once they hit middle school, you will have figured this out, right? So I think for a lot of families who are coming to us with concern, it's what do we do for the emergent situations of only forty percent of our students exceeding beginning of the year while we're trying to figure out MTSS, while we're trying to figure out benchmarks, while we're trying, right? So those are the concerns that all of us are fearing about. What about the kid that's sitting in the classroom today, who's not going to reap the benefits of this rollout in two, three years? I'm just going to say what we've all been talking about individually. That's, that's a real concern. What, what do we do now to help those kids? And this is true every time we roll out curriculum. And I think Nicole's question of what are we learning every time we roll this out is a good one so that we can get better and better at this. So I'm not saying we have answers tonight, but this is where it's coming from. There's real concern about today's kids who are in the situation of the rollout. And I'm hearing it from a lot of families who are frustrated and worried.
So I think that's the secondary piece. The elementary piece is like, you know, sixth grade is receiving elementary kids that are forty percent. That program isn't new. Why are we still below sort of neighboring districts or comp districts? And can't seem to climb into that comfort zone where we're hitting like a confident level of exceeding, I don't care, but just like needing, not so many below or approaching and the wind blocks and like, you know, whatever the components come together to be, it's like, what, what do we? I just have more questions than answers still on that, so.
So for next steps, for getting started.
Maybe this is it.
Where are we working on?
No way to transition.
Move the slide.
So we hear you and we are working on it too for the fifth to sixth transition. Tara and I have been talking about that too. And so they look good at the end of fifth grade. What is happening? Is it because it's a different assessment system that we're using? Because we're using STAR and then they're going to iExcel. And we're not making excuses. We are trying to figure out what, what it is too. So we are in constant communication. We're trying to make a plan for transitioning the fifth, the sixth. And we do it for the students, we have that data, but we want to make sure teachers are going to be able to do that. Our math specialists are from the elementary. We're working on that to make sure that it's a better transition from elementary to middle. So it is on our radar and we appreciate you sharing that and being transparent with us. So for K to five next steps, as Ryan said, we, the Esper Academy, it's now at Gates. It's Jenkins is doing it this year and we're sort of setting up the foundations and everything that we need for a smooth rollout next year for all elementary schools. It's been, it's been great. Megan, the humanities coordinator and I have been learning a lot. And it's going to just be nice to have everything together and, and really looking at the whole track. We're excited about it. Grade level collaboration structures is something that we're really, really wishing to share. Making sure that all grade levels meet weekly, but they also are meeting with their math and literacy specialists. It was happening in caucus, but because we're so cognizant of math specialists and literacy specialists having time with students, we sort of, sort of glossed on a little bit for a few years, but that time is so precious so that we have that communication with the math and literacy specialists and share data, share what they're learning about the students with the classroom teacher so that they can have a plan for tier, strong tier-one instruction too. So we put those structures in place at all schools. As well as Ryan mentioned it too, the cross-district grade level collaboration time has been huge. We've gotten so many emails in addition to the feedback that Ryan received, emails saying, thank you, this is what we needed. We haven't had it since COVID. It's been lovely. So that has been a great opportunity for teachers to collaborate across the district. Coming after the mid-year benchmark, parents have been receiving in Aspen, meeting, exceeding or below or approaching. And that's certainly it because it's early order at the time. Now, exciting news, the parent letters from DIBL, STAR and Universal Screener will be in addition to what you were receiving before at there. The, the family report will also be there. So you've got more data within that. Excited. So yeah, so all.
When you get the not meeting, you're like, well, what is in this thing?
Yep, we've heard all of it. We had to start slow, but so now all of those. So whatever the report is that you receive, so if K to four, E L A is DIBL, two to five will be STAR and K and one will get the universal screen. That is a family letter that will be uploaded. And then we're going to continue our use of S T M throughout the district. I think it's a good pair with Eureka because there's no language and heavy language. So I think it's a nice pairing and it's been really working well for elementary.
The next steps, I'd like to, I'm afraid to mention the word benchmarking yet, but I'm going to. So we are going to. We're going to continue to work on it. I mean, that's the best that we can do is to continue to work on what's consistent, what's the best time to benchmark, what are the best ways to benchmark, how often, all of those things. Continue to evaluate with the collaboration structures with the math specialists and the, and the classroom teachers and making sure that there is time, direction, communication, to make sure that we're seeing what's happening in the data. We're directly interacting with students. Still working on what the best benchmarking system is at the course level for the high school, you know? I've had several conversations with Mr. Lawrence about this. It's, it's just a different thing. It's not really grade levels so much anymore. It's more course-like level to the way you were saying earlier about, you know? So what does that look like? How do we do that? Course-like collaboration structures for the high school. The only ones that will A P V sessions is the high school. They love all of that time to spend together. Not that the middle schoolers can do, but they really create that time to work together and talk the math and talk the curriculum and talk what they're doing and talking the best practices. So it's been really enjoying. And then continue working on addition six through twelve and looking at all of the pieces and parts of the puzzle to the, to the program.
Can I ask a quick question before you go to this slide?
I sure can.
So in your, the goals and beliefs, you mentioned, we talked a lot about data and how you're using it. There was also a mention of effective instructional practices. I'm just wondering, sort of what's that process of like, how are, how are we as a district and a team supporting each other in, you know, again, as we said earlier, as the curriculum is rolled out, like how, what's that support look like to change up or adjust practices as needed? Where's that happening?
At the elementary level, there's, if, there's math workshops we're thinking about. In winders, that's our small instructional program, so that's our instructional practice. We think about what manipulatives would make the most sense for our students. Sometimes it's just a game. So if they're not getting this fraction concept, what, what game can we call it? Is it a pizza game? Those are sort of the instructional practices that we're thinking about to make sure that these concepts are sticking and taking something that's pretty abstract in terms of math and making it concrete. There's like my favorite, no, sometimes we're going to put a question up with the wrong answer and the kids have to figure out what, why was this wrong? Where was, did the mistake happen? There's, I mean, teachers have so many things in their toolbox. Elementary, yeah, feels a little more fun.
That's not true. I was just thinking about all the games I could have them do. She mentioned these fraction games and I was like, you can definitely do those too. I teach statistics. We do lots of fun things in statistics. Always a little look of dice, like whenever you bring the match and star first, that's one of their favorite things. That actually comes, you know, that's, so, but, but also too, the same thing, right? Like we're trying to, whatever we can do to make it hands-on. I mean, although I'm joking, I mean, we do all those activities so that students can see that it's hands-on. Anytime that's the opportunity we can explore what the math is and then nail it down. I was, well, I didn't coin this phrase, but it's like explore it first and formalize it later. And I think those are the ideas that, that we can work on. And one of the benefits of the new program is. And one of the benefits of the new program is again, the same group of teachers I was talking to earlier, is that they have the manipulatives, but now the manipulative kids are online. So they're just talking about balancing equations and they have this real visual for students. I, I think they had an actual balance before, but I don't, I don't think it was as balanced as it once was, maybe a while ago. So now I have something computerized. It's actually balanced. It makes a lot of sense for students to do. And they, they use a lot of manipulatives. Like I said, it makes it hands-on and it's, and they can see where it's going. Those are the instructional practices.
So those conversations are happening at each grade level, across grade level? Yes, and both for elementary?
Yeah. I mean, it happens in the department time that the teachers have at the middle school. High school has their late start Wednesdays. That's when they have their collaboration time and they, and they work together on instructional strategies. I mean, things that we talk about in department needs instructional strategies, best practices, we share those things. So. Yeah, new math we're sharing. We completed the pilot at the end of last year. Talked before the prior to school starting of order materials. You know, they came, they unboxed them, they labeled them, we distributed them. Came with an online component too. So our PD day on November 5th was where the sixth through twelve math department sort of learned those pieces of it, right? The activation on it. So we started off sort of, sort of slowly. There, I mean, obviously teachers have different couple levels where they are in terms of using things online. By the end of the November, I would say that all of the students were connected online. And, and since then, teachers have been using both the hard copy and the online versions of it. And again, I think that we're still exploring all of the pieces to it. There are a lot of different parts to this. And that's where we're going next, right? Like as we explore all of the different pieces to this, to this program, there's so many pieces actually to it. And, and we don't want to throw it all in at once because that's not always going to be great too. So we want to sort of slowly go through all the pieces that we need. We have another PD scheduled with Sabas. They actually have a presenter coming out and helping us with the program and they can answer more direct questions about what's available specifically on the implementation this time. So the less time just activating the program is much more implementing it. And we're gonna continue to, you know, we look at redesign assessment and our instructional materials to align with Sabas. And I already mentioned it, but we already work really closely to, there's the gap, right? So there's a bridge from Eureka to Invision. And so we'll work together to make sure that all of those pieces are together, you know? So it's a cool, so feel the break a lot in that as well. Like, let me go ahead.
I don't, I don't, it's not really a question. I guess I would just say like, just to reiterate what Nicole said earlier, now is the time. I'm working you on calendar and budget for next year. I would just encourage you to kind of think, what, what's the, what are some ideas that could really kind of shake us up a little and move us forward? And I know we can't like have a magic wand and tell you, get everything you want, but I would just love to know, like if there is something different, you know, is, is it, is it more, more frequent PD sessions to offer more of that collaboration than, is it coaching? Is it peer coaching? I don't know. Like there's all sorts of things that I'm not thinking about, but I just think, I think that would be, this, this would be, now is the time to start asking for what are the real difference makers gonna be while we're waiting for the new curriculum to rotate? What does that look like? Because I think we would be very interested in knowing. And I think investing in math is something that we want to do and really feel like it's time to do. So, you know, just encourage you to think about that.
Or no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have some new business here. I know, doing Mr. O'Driscoll, SHS. Oh, sorry. I see other people behind me. Oh, yeah. All right.
Hi, I'm Charlie O'Driscoll. I am a biology and environmental science teacher at Sichuan High School and I'd like to propose a field trip in June of 2026 to the Azores, Portugal. This trip is sponsored by EF. Personally, this would be my third time traveling with students using this company. And I have a lot of really great things to say about our previous experiences. The idea for this trip was kind of born when last year I presented to you all with Roxanne Griffin for our bi-annual South Central America Science and Culture and Language Immersion Trip to the Galapagos. Because that trip is very travel intensive, we had to really limit the size of the group to twenty kids. We had well over thirty applicants. We kind of had to go first come, first served there. And just in having conversations with a, a lot of those students who applied later and other families as well, it seemed like a good idea to create another similar opportunity where we wouldn't need to limit the size of the group necessarily as much and still create those opportunities for language and culture immersion, but even more focused on the science. So this trip is a STEM-focused trip. If you have the materials there, there's, it's kind of jam-packed with excursions, activities. There'll be days where we focus on seismology and volcanology, geology, marine biology, including a whale watch, sustainable agriculture, conservation, as well as a, both a lecture and lab opportunity at the University of Azores. So kids will be working with professors and students there, actually testing the water that will collect on the whale watch. And there's just really great, a lot of opportunities here. I was hoping to run the trip in June of 2026 for a few reasons. One, it is a better time to travel there for like the purposes of seeing wildlife and the experiences that students will have, like in regards to the climate while we're there, as well as to minimize any school that students will be seeing. So the proposed dates right now are just about as final exams are wrapping up and after that. So it's a little bit less conventional for a field trip that it would kind of be students kicking off their summer in this way. But it seems like a good opportunity to prevent them from missing school while we're going. I was hoping to open the trip to current ninth through eleventh graders. So they would be wrapping up 10, 11 and 12th grade as they travel. Typically, we bring, kind of open it just to rising juniors and seniors. So that would be the current 10th and 11th grade. This trip, because it doesn't have as much regional travel, will be in one location with just day excursions. Seems a little bit more feasible to bring a larger group and a bigger range of students. That's kind of how I came to those decisions there. I think that's really all I have. If you guys have any questions about the trip.
So this is, it's instead of the Galapagos?
Yeah, so we've been doing those trips sort of bi-annually. They were Costa Rica a few times and Ecuador and Galapagos. So this would be kind of speeding up a year for those students because it's juniors and seniors bi-annually. It's kind of one opportunity to go. And a lot of those juniors who applied later to the Galapagos trip would then have this opportunity as well. So sort of, yeah, sort of.
And I, when I saw the June 2026, I was like, wait a minute. So I appreciate you being cognizant of the days that the students, they, they won't be missing a lot of school days, but it's still a school trip. So I thank you for that.
Yes. Yes. I, I really appreciate that.
So you don't have the dates because we don't have a calendar for 2026?
That, as well as the number of students that end up, I mean, we would do only six to go to run it, but I would take a large, much larger group.
Yeah.
If that's the kind of enrollment list we get from students who want to go. And so it determines that because of flights.
Okay. And you said mostly juniors, seniors. So I'm just thinking timing. So when do the students, when does this get presented to the students?
Probably in the next couple of weeks. Yeah. If assuming that.
All right. I guess my question is more like, if you're a sophomore now and theoretically could go, how do you know you can go and what classes you'll be taking that might be connected? Or is it automatic, is it sort of like, that's the pathway that they already know?
Previously, these trips, we haven't had like a class requirement for students. They don't have to be in environmental science, but we do have a lot of like cross-curricular things with all, all different levels, specifically biology and environmental science, but also with our oceanography ornithology classes, chemistry, even a little bit with what we'll be doing in the lab at the University of Azores. So.
So they all hit something.
They all kind of, yeah.
So it's open to all. I was just thinking about.
All work physics.
Planning and.
Yeah.
The advantages of being on top of it insofar in advance, the hindrances, like who knows what, where they'll, what they'll be studying next year. That makes sense.
Has EF Torres given you like a ballpark of the total cost?
Yes, I think it's in the.
Forty-two.
It's there, yeah.
Too many field trips.
It is a.
Forty-two ninety-nine.
Yes. It is a relatively, it's an expensive trip. It is eight days in Europe and then be staying in hotels with a lot of excursions and all of their meals in there. That's kind of where that price comes from. EF does a really good job with scholarship opportunities as well as they have fundraising kind of built into their website. So it's like GoFundMe, but it's directed yes. So there's nothing to use or anything to be out, which is great. And they have interest-free payment for weekends as well.
And we still have our little line item in the kitchen, right? That we support students and I know such as.
Christmas. Yeah.
So those are all some things to be had. And then we're, we're, we're just, there's a lot of these. So at some point, it might be worth knowing how much of that little pot of money that we set aside is being used. Is it a hundred percent? Is it, is there any more? Like I, I'd just like to know as we approve continually more and more and more expensive field trips, how that's looking. Are people needing that money?
It's like you don't, you're not lacking sign-ups.
Yeah, so that's high school education, but normal, yeah. I think it's just good to keep our eye on.
I agree.
I do have a hard time like moving trips that cost that much money for students, high school students.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it sounds like a fantastic trip and a great opportunity, but it still looks.
I definitely acknowledge that it is an expensive trip. But part of it is that, you know, this is, some of the students are kind of opting into with their families and with it being so far in advance, kind of having that opportunity to plan a little bit.
See the mask?
Yeah.
Something Mr. read about. This is not the unique situation, situation, honestly. Like so many districts are going on these amazing trips and they are expensive. Traveling is, you know?
Yeah. I'm with you.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's a lot less expensive doing it inside.
It is. This is kind of a great deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
There's a conversation that I've had with students before too is like, just because you are a student traveling in this group, it's a great experience because you get to experience a little bit of that independence. And it's definitely different than traveling with your teachers and with your parents or your families. And then understanding that if you were to try and do this opportunity when you're in your twenties, it's gonna be actually a lot more expensive too. So.
Well, I, I, because, what is the cancellation policy for students if they suddenly can't go?
Yeah, so there's a few different kind of options they can enroll in. We, I think it is slide, it's a really short.
My slide.
Yeah, it's.
It's about thirteen.
Five, thirteen, twelve or thirteen. So we kind of have the choice to include like the basic protection in the plan. So that includes like cancellations for medical, it's like a really long list, just like your credit card would, would if you booked a flight on. It's a long list. And then families can opt into like extra protection where if they need to cancel it, they get everything back except for that cost of that insurance. And then there is, I think up to a year in the next slide there, they can cancel a year up to departure. So that would be like six, eight months now or more than that.
If they're just deciding now.
Yeah.
That they want to go. This is so, I should be one of those. Because it says up to a year prior to departure, but that's like in a few, that's like in, six months.
Yes, so they decided now and they want, they could cancel up until the end of June, like this year for that.
I'm just thinking of like next year.
Yeah.
You know, this time next year, if somebody finds that they can go, what happens?
We have had that happen actually with the Galapagos trip. We had a student who just, who chose not to attend the trip anymore. And I don't know all of the financials, but I know they had purchased the insurance. So it wasn't a very difficult decision for that family to make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a year there.
All right. Take a motion. These are trip.
Oh, second. Oh, sorry. I moved, sorry. Sorry, sorry. I was trying to do something else while I, while I offered to do this, which I don't normally do. Hold on. This is normally.
It's gonna be a new seat.
New seat?
What?
I know, it's my new seat.
Okay, so I moved to approve the out-of-country field trip to Azores, Portugal. Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, see, another person coming from behind. Erden?
Hello. Mr. Driscoll, some tips on bringing that price down. Because we have such a lovely relationship with, yeah.
Right?
So stay tuned, but I'm here to talk about another exciting trip, which you all know about, and that is our Spanish exchange. So I'm hoping you had a chance to take a look at the presentations that I sent you. You know why we believe so much in these exchanges and promote them. We think they're wonderful for students. It's a great opportunity to gain perspective on other cultures beyond the walls of Situ Inc. We continue to exchange with Julio Caro Baroca High School in Guecho, Spain, which is right outside Bilbao. So if you're looking at that map I sent you or in the purple region of Spain, right near France, which is absolutely beautiful on the Contador Sea. Some more information for you. We will continue to spend a weekend in Madrid. You cannot go to Spain without seeing the Palacio Real, the Museo de Prado. And you have to row a boat through Parque de Retiro. We will do all of those things. Our trip is open to current 10th and 11th graders, who will be juniors and seniors next year. Because we have such a robust and healthy travel and exchange program here in the Situ Public Schools, we occasionally tap an underclassman and encourage them to, to apply to round out numbers and match what Spain has because their travel and exchange programs are not nearly as fruitful as ours. We will be hosting in September of 2025, hopefully at the end, traveling in April of 2026. You know what a typical day looks like because you've seen the children all over the school and around town. And we follow that same model when we're over there in Spain. We are able to plan the trip for about $2,600. When I say about, airfare has been so fluid, airfare prices. So I've seen prices double what they were a year or two ago. So I say 2,600, but I do say to the parents and the students, I may have to ask you for a little bit more money depending on flights, particularly because we do plan around April vacation. That happens to be a very popular time to travel to Spain. Because we do not contract out with a company like EF, we are not always able to refund money. It depends on when a student needs to withdraw from the trip. So if it's before we've purchased airfare, we wouldn't charge them for the airfare. We, we can't give back a full refund, but we always work with families because we've seen, you know, a lot happen since COVID. And we use the district's unit pay system to track payments and things like that. And that has been wonderful and makes refunding and things like that payment out to companies that we work with.
All right. I just have a question about payment, just through EF.
Yeah.
Paid EF.
Yep.
So through this, parents who would make the payment through the town?
To the Situ, yep, exactly.
So if the kids that go on it post with students?
Correct, yep. So the student that they stay with.
Rose wants to go on this, so I need to know what we're voting for.
Wait, you need to know.
Close this closure.
Who's staying at your house?
Yeah.
How many students you're taking in?
We usually take around twenty-five students. We usually take around twenty five students. Um, Spain is actually always the one that has more students than we have, so we usually have to limit at about twenty five. We have not had a problem, we haven't had to turn students down recently because we have so many other trips. Kids are really pulled in a variety of different directions and exchanges aren't for everybody. The trips are sometimes more attractive for students. So don't you worry.
You're gonna let Rose go on the trip?
Yeah, she asked me the other day. I don't want to put a statement.
Paul, you know.
Yeah. All right. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the out of country field trip to Spain as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't feel you have to take her just because.
Oh.
She's a song.
Very deserving.
You don't, seriously.
Have a great day. All right, last item of new business here, we have, uh, Tanya Rendell with our SHS School Counseling. Program of Studies.
Hi, everybody.
Hey.
Um, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to share highlights and, um, additions and program, uh, programmatic changes to the Program of Studies for the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six school year. I can't believe we're already talking about it. Um, you have a copy of the executive summary and also a draft copy of the Program of Studies, uh, for your information. Department chairs are here tonight to answer any questions that you have. I'm just gonna run through the, um, highlight some, some of the changes, um, for you. Um, in terms of the overview of the Program of Studies, this year we added a description to the AP Capstone Diploma Program. As you may recall, last year we added AP Seminar to our Program of Studies. Um, and it's been a very popular course and this year, next year, we're hoping to add AP Research. And if students take both the Seminar and the Research Course, Courses, in addition to four additional AP Courses, who score three or above, they will be able to get an AP Capstone Designation from the College Board. So we're hoping that we can run that class, uh, next year. Regarding the, and cast graduation requirement, we updated the language to reflect revised state law requirements. Um, and then in terms of the department specific updates, Business Education, we have a title change to, uh, Economic Concepts of Independent Living, to Adulting One O One and Independent Living. In English, we made some updates to the language about leveling in order to stay consistent with the other full year core courses in Math, Science, History and World Language. And we're also hoping to add a new course, a new senior selective course called Lean Into the Lyric, A Dive Into the Culture and History of Python. Um, in Fine Arts, we have a few changes to some of the course titles. Uh, and right now we have, um, a two D class and a three D art class. The two D is going to be, uh, drawing and painting and the three D is going to specify ceramics and sculpture. In Health and Wellness, there's going to be a new course offering called Unified Adapted Physical Education Wellness, Wellness Internship. In History and Social Studies, as I mentioned, the AP Research Course will be added to the curriculum next year. Um, in Math, we have a course title change from Statistics and Probability to Intro to Statistics. As well as the addition of a semesterized computer science elective called Honors Intro to Python. Um, in Science and Science Engineering Technology, we continue to build on our Project Lead the Way opportunities. So they added a Project Lead the Way Principles of Engineering Honors Course as well as a Project Lead the Way Environmental Sustainability Course. Uh, these courses will replace the robotics classes and the tech drawing classes. Um, and I've been told by Patrick, who's here tonight to answer any questions that you may have, um, that the content and skills that they had in robotics and tech drawing will be embedded into the new Project Lead the Way courses.
It's actually at a higher level, it's, yeah, it's more in-depth. Project Lead the Way is more in-depth.
Um, and then they added an honors option for meteorology to be in line with the other semesterized courses in science. Uh, we have like, um, Oceanography and we've been, um, drawing, like Forensics. So there are a couple of other, uh, science electives that they're just want to make sure that Meteorology has an honors, um, option as well. Um, no changes in Special Education. And in World Languages, they're adding a Mandarin Five CP class to be consistent with the French and Spanish offerings. And, um, again, they're gonna replace the, uh, Spanish Four and Five Mundo Twenty One Worlds and the French Four and Five Francophone with the French Four and Five and the Spanish Four and Five Culture Three Belts. Which is they rotate every, every other year. Um, and they added language regarding a dual enrollment description for Spanish Two to college prep honors. So that's our, those are the highlights of the changes.
Yeah, this is some language changes and things like that when the program plays its own language here as well, but that's, that's the highlights.
So I got, I have a question about the, um, environmental sustainability.
Yeah.
And it says it replaces the robotics, so we still have robotics, right?
Yeah, we have a robotics club that, that meets in the afternoon, yeah. And then, in fact, they were there today till about six thirty working. But the, the course itself is gonna be replaced by the Project Lead the Way.
So there will not be a robotics class, there will not be a robotics class.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, you feel that's, the club kind of meets that need?
Yeah, and the Project Lead the Way, Patrick probably. Do you want to come to, Patrick can answer the question more.
I mean, the robotics, I, you know.
I, I agree.
Their team has done such a great job, I don't want to lose out on.
We don't, yeah, he'll explain, it's, it's more in-depth actually. Yeah, you can have my.
I would say. So, um, I hear you're looking at the, the environmental sustainability. The actual course that's sort of the robotics replacement is the Principles of Engineering. So what we've done, um, with PLTW's blessing, um, is we're going to, uh, so Principles of Engineering is a full year long course. But the reality is it's four different topics that really could be done in any order and any whatever. So we're going to allow students to, um, register for either one or both semesters of it. One of those semesters would end up being robotics heavy. In other words, one of those four topics, one of them is motion and automation, the other one is robotics. So when you put those together, it really covers all the same content and skills we're currently teaching in the robotics classes, but it puts a Project Lead the Way storyline and spin on it. Uh, that actually is phenomenal, so, uh, we think it's an improvement in that regard.
Okay, thank you, because I just, you made it, the robot, I mean, the robotics here is just so phenomenal. Don't want to take away.
And the robotics team is awesome, as always.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about the, the graduation requirements. So I know that now that we, the state's no longer requiring MCAS as a competency determination, I believe, um, we have to create a new policy around that, and so I just wasn't sure if that, which is not yet ready, we haven't really done much with it, as I've been reading the guides from Desi, which is that they are not providing.
Guides.
A lot of guidance.
The guide says there is no.
So we have to do a little more research to figure that out. Um, so that's gonna be forthcoming, it's not gonna be ready immediately. What, when we figure that out, would we amend this? Yes, okay, that's.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Okay, and then question two is just this credit requirement of a grade of D minus or better. I was like, D minus, um, is that, that's typical to your knowledge? Have we always had that? Does that feel like the right thing? I don't know, just to me, that was a little bit alarming, but I also don't have a lot of experience in high school, and so being that's okay. But I just was curious to kind of learn more about kind of what our history has been with, uh, our own graduation requirements and that credit.
A D minus is still passing, um, and that's something that has been around for a long time.
Okay.
Um, in terms of graduation requirements, it's always something to have a conversation about.
I guess what I'm worried about is just without, you know, any sort of external measure, which MCAS is obviously imperfect. You know, I'm not gonna pretend that that was perfect, but I guess without any external measure, I just worry, like, are we sending kids out into the world with enough? You know, that's all. It's not really a question you can answer, it's more of just a thought as I was looking this over and now I have to review that.
Yeah, as I look at grades too, and as I, well, study, well, not study, but, but analyze how, how students are doing in classrooms, there are a ton of things that most of the, yeah, most of the students are doing really well. Yeah, I do, it's, you know, it's, I don't, it's not something that I'm, I'm concerned about because I don't see a lot of it. See a lot of, of good grades. Not, not that, not that one.
I think the concern is we're sending somebody out that's getting like a D minus in like all their classes. But maybe it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess, I don't, we also don't want to create a scenario where people are feeling pressure or getting pressure from parents to not give the grade that the child is actually earning. You know, there's just a lot to think about, I guess, and we try and figure out, you know, how to set kids up for the best success that we can. That was just one thing I wanted to know. So I guess what'll happen is in terms of process, policies that committee will create something and then we will amend this. And we should probably do that soon because we have kids who are trying to graduate.
I can tell you.
Right.
Speaking to all the superintendents of the schools, and we're not alone.
Yeah, no, I know.
Just had a meeting with the interim commissioner and shoot networks carefully. They're not, like you said, they're not doing anything, you know, which is an opportunity, as I look at it, for us to kind of set our own standards, but, you know, sell shirts around the school, a Google Doc saying, what are you all doing for competency examination right now? It was blank. It was like kind of, we're working on it now, we just got the news, so. It is an opportunity, so you got, I look at it as a couple of chunks. We have to worry certainly about this year's tenth graders because that's coming up quickly. Um, like Mark said, Central Public Schools, there's not a lot of kids that pass MCAS. And all of the kids in that, oh, but we're working on that now and that policy, something we have saying that we'll have more, as the process goes, but more, uh, opportunity, I think, over the next few weeks to months to see what other districts are doing, but also this child, of course. We always have flexibility to change that, improve that year to year, so we, we do have some indicator. One of the schools actually was gonna still use MCAS.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Don't know if I would advise that, but that, that would be, we're still using that as a benchmark. Talk about benchmarks, I think the problem, because as we know, it's a year later, it's, it's, it's old data. It's certainly a solid data point to use, so that's also a possibility.
I have a couple of questions. Um, first, I know this is small, but I, I have to, the logo on the front, I'm just curious if we're thinking like you do the anchor, like, you know.
I like an anchor, yeah.
You see a lot of the different logos.
That's a good point, I will amend it, yeah, I, um, enjoying this one.
I like the both.
I, I'm with you, all right, good point.
I know we got a bunch of them floating around.
Yeah.
We have to pick a link.
I appreciate that, oh.
Not, not, you know, so.
It's like a Sandler, for Sandler's.
Kind of in the same thread, just as a person who is a visual learner, I know that we have to get this information out there, how to present it is what it is, it's a, you know, the course offerings and you need all the descriptors. I did a little looking at, you know, what else is out there and I've seen some cool, almost like specifically thinking, even just one example, like the pathways that we have, such a cool, really, I love what Situenc is doing on this, I think it's amazing opportunities for students. We need to celebrate that more, we need to get that information out there in a way that feels digestible to parents, especially like our eighth grade coming in, coming home to set sail, not, not feeling like registered, registered an eighth grader going into ninth and the ninth going into tenth who's already in the high school. You know, sometime, there's some like really cool flow charts of like, here's what the freshman, this is what you take, and then it sort of flows to this, and then it flows to that. So like just a different way of presenting it. You know, I don't know, just something to think about going forward when we're, when we're trying to present like so much information to eighth grade parents and even as a sophomore parent, I don't know what I do, like, I'm like, where does he go next? I have no idea. Obviously, you know, we'll take the time to read through, but some of these flow chart looking things out there are really, just, it really cuts the chase of what, what you need and whatnot.
It's good for parents to just see.
Yeah.
Like tell me at the end of the day what I need to read.
That's what that does.
Exactly. I want to get to it.
Instead of looking at the seventy three page.
Yeah.
Catalog.
Yeah, exactly, so like for the visual set.
Yep.
Mine, you got it. If, that's it, this is what I wrote down, actually, it's an infographic. Um, so that was just one thing. Okay, uh, okay, I'm gonna go there. So I'm strongly upset that as a parent of a student who is in band, that our band and chorus students are unable to take advanced placement courses in grade ten because they want to be in band. It's inequitable, except for AP Chemistry, which is not everybody's cup of tea, I know, I know, I love you guys, but. You know, so it's, it's totally, and I know that a solution is not an easy one, I know this involves multiple, like the schedule itself and the work that goes into it is, you know, commendable, I know it's not easy. But it's a massive, to me, it's just a huge problem. I think we're gonna see, we have awesome kids coming up from Gates that love these arts and they deserve an opportunity to take advanced placement, just like everybody else and, you know, I really, really feel like my son has been totally set on a different trajectory course-wise because he was not allowed into that. You know, because of the restrictions of that, and you, you know, you and I talked about that, but, you know, I just wanted to know if there's any other talks or at the high school level about how, because it isn't just a, my student problem, it's gonna, yeah, so this is gonna be just like, we're gonna see more of it as we, opening up these great opportunities for AP, like Seminar and, and, and all of that is awesome. But it's not open to all, and it's, I hate that we have to pigeonhole kids from choosing their passion of music to strong academics and challenging areas there.
And getting their graduation requirements in.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just, um, I don't know. So that was something that's on my, um, I think that was really it, like really just looking at, I know like adulting is the total trendy term. Yeah, I, I was wondering about like hearing about Belmont and districts like that that are requiring those for graduation, some of those life skills classes, and they're like embedding them into kind of that PE Health and Wellness and it's like, whatever grade level, sophomores take that as a, an elective or like, you know, a quarter or something, but everybody goes through that. If we, you know, the high school is considering that or if you're kind of keeping it more, uh, just elective based or, you know, what's going on in community discussions at the school council level about that. Just curious.
Say it, who's it?
Oh, yeah, no, I just didn't know if that was like, when we were, like, if you're kind of revamping that positive, just the, the adulting class there, was there any talk about making it like more of a requirement graduation-wise, just because that seems to be happening out there in other districts?
Yeah, that's not something that, um, we've talked about.
Not making it up?
Yeah, like not in general. I think that was all that I had. Great, um. Move over. Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't like it, really.
It's anything happened at the middle school with the, with the period where they can do more or not.
We're missing that.
Colby gave up music because he wanted to have more. That time, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big time.
And I know it's my, it's a challenge, though. But the.
Nah, it's nice.
Right.
The band does. The band can't make strip clubs or any sports have an after. It's totally inequitable.
That might, yeah, sure. That may be, that may be the.
I didn't realize.
The difference between sports.
That's why it's.
Also like.
But I'd like to see. I mean, they're awesome states.
We're just talking about band and like, could we make it after school? Honestly, just because I don't know what else to do.
You guys, you know that.
It's a huge problem.
You guys don't, it's a huge problem.
Even in elementary school, kids are getting pulled out of core classes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a forever.
Alright. Finally made it to you. I'm so sorry.
You got lucky today, it was a robust.
I learned a lot, as I said, it was an elementary education topic, so I can't, I really can't thank you. Really, you're gonna see me. There you go.
Regardless of how this is going to be the problem.
Alright, Ms. Limwab and Ms. Fenwick, I'll see.
So after, as next steps from last time's meeting, um, Ryan pulled some data for us to show how many kids, um, this would impact. It's a very small number of kids, which is what we knew it would be. Um, so in some ways, that's a good thing, um, in some ways, that's, you know, there's definitely, as we said before, are gonna be those parents who've got kids born on September ninth, who are gonna be like, ah. But I think the rationale behind keeping that date is probably as good of a rationale as we're going to get, um, in terms of, is it the fifteenth, is it the thirtieth, is it October? You know, we kind of went through that last time, so that is kind of where that piece landed. Um, I, I took a look through some other districts' policies, um, because, uh, we had talked a little bit about how our policy makes it seem very much like, send your kid, don't send your kid, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and that doesn't feel like the right spirit that we want to approach the start of kindergarten with. And so, um, what I would recommend is adding some language similar to, um, Hingham and Norwell, um, which I did share last time, and I'd like you to share again. Um, so I think, I think we can make the policy that just starts out with, a child who will be five years of age on or before September eighth is eligible to attend kindergarten in September of that year. That's the first part of the policy. The second sentence would be, recognizing that it is genuinely in the best interest of a student and their classmates to maintain classes within a reasonable chronological and developmental range. The situat public school district expects parents and guardians to enroll their students in kindergarten for the first year they are eligible to attend. Parents with questions about their child's readiness should contact the principal of the school at which their child will attend. So that would sort of set the tone a little differently than our current opening line, which is something that feels a little bit more, you know.
Set them up, yeah, well, because it's not required.
Right, right, it's not required, right. Um, and then the second, that was from Hingham, Hingham's policy, the second piece is from Norwell's policy, and I think this addresses the whole first grade conversation that we had.
Oh, yeah.
Because first grade being when school, compulsory school actually begins. I do think we have to address first grade in the policy. So what Norwell has is, students who have not attended kindergarten and who are age six years old before September eighth, I guess we would say on or before, I guess we have to make that thought, on or before September eighth, will be assigned to grade one unless, in the sole judgment of the principal with the agreement of the parent, kindergarten is more developmentally appropriate placement, or unless a previous arrangement has been agreed to by the principal and parent prior to the child reaching kindergarten age.
I like that.
It's more, it gives more guidance. It's a little more specific.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that's kind of what we're aiming for, and, you know, as we talked about last time, I think we all agree that ideally, we narrow the age and developmental levels of students because that's going to make it easier for teachers. It's obvious, it's an imperfect science, um, and we'll never be able to say, you know, these are the dates with certainty, but I do think this gets us a little closer to that goal.
Doesn't make sense, I.
Okay.
This is normal pace.
He does, he does, I.
He's happy.
He's just contemplating. I like that it doesn't limit, it, it, it still allows for conversations, like, for families, you have the principals.
Yes.
No matter what you feel, where you feel your child is, is not, and I think that's as close as we can come to saying, like, you start on this stage, you just, you can't come in if you're after that. You know, because there are unique, every.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it's not.
Sorry, do you mind just reading, um, the portion, the second part on the principal, um, responsibility? Just so, just one thing we're mindful of is, um.
I'm gonna send it to.
Trying to be clear in the, in the policy, and then also, um, trying not to have principals be, you know, put a challenging decision maker in situations, um, so, yeah.
Yeah. So should it be somebody else?
No, no, I just, I just, I'm sorry, I just need to hear it one more time.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna try to split it up. I'm gonna send it to my photo of class, but yeah, I can't remember. Okay, so she'll protect it, and I will also read it. Okay, so the principal is named in two places. The first time is in the second paragraph, um, where it talks about expecting parents to send their child when they, when they are first ready, or developmentally, sorry, when they are first chronologically ready. Uh, parents with questions about their child's readiness should contact the principal of the school at which their child will. So that's the first part. I mean, right now, we have a screening, right, that takes place.
Correct, yeah.
I think the challenge with the screening is that, and I think it makes sense to have it at this time, but it takes place in May, I'm pretty sure. Um, and so for parents who are trying to figure out, like, am I sending, am I not sending, am I able, you know, what's going on, having to put down deposits for.
It's too, it's so small, sorry.
Sorry.
Try, like. Right. I kind of just opened it up on my screen, you know, like, zoom your screen.
I think that, that worked really well.
There you go.
Here we can.
Is that better? Better.
You can hide the compose, see the arrow, the top left arrow there, you can move that, yeah, right there.
Oh, no.
No, that was what I was gonna avoid.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
I know, you can hide this, maybe it's this one. There we go.
There we go, sorry.
Don't worry, there's nothing too interesting hiding, you know, everyone.
Okay, so that's the first part that mentions the principal, and then there is the second part as well, which is regarding.
In sole judgment of the principal.
Just sure how, I, I'm sorry, you, did you ask what I?
Yes.
Yeah, we wanna know what you think.
I, I just think that's confusing about, it says in the sole judgment of the principal with the agreement of the parent, so does the principal.
Therefore not.
So maybe we take, this was literally, I was collaborating, so I did not write this.
Principal. Yeah. This is from Norwell, this is from Norwell.
So we could take a, well, I don't, you know, I guess we say in the judgment of the principal with the agreement.
Collaboration.
You say, and, and a principal collaboration.
Like, who has the, the screen?
The teacher usually does the screening.
So it's like, teacher, principal, family, right?
I think the idea behind the screening is the teachers do the physical screening.
Well, they do, can they have a screen, what do they do if somebody just walks in the first grade?
Our policy speaks to that. Child who will be six on the, on or before September one is eligible to attend grade one on the first scheduled day of that school year.
Yes, so this is reiterating that.
I'm just saying, like, you know.
With the addition of this information. I think this is like for people who do not go to kindergarten here, who meant, are entering first grade for the first time. If you're six, we're gonna put you in first grade, not here.
Right.
This really is for the parent who, the child is six, but they're actually contemplating everything in kindergarten.
Exactly, right, so what we're saying is, the default is you're going to first grade unless there is some extending, sorry.
Yeah, you wish you would collaborate, let the principal and school team make that decision together.
The only thing I would recommend is that when you're getting rayers, those rayers are typically exposed in agreement. So, for example, if it's in collaboration with parents, parents and the principal disagree.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is, could happen.
I mean, is it Bill's, is it your, is it your?
Probably very rare.
You wanna, are you the one who has the final say then?
Well, it says principal on me.
I know, I think you should say you. I mean, I think in an ideal world, yeah, the principal and the parent come to an agreement about what's best for the child, but if, this, I, what you're saying, this doesn't leave space for what happens when that is heard.
But I think we have to put something in there, like, that we're relying on the general professionals that, and they assess it, like, if they have a question.
Or maybe something with, in collaboration with the final decision being made by the president.
Yeah.
I don't think this is paving the problem, but they know what decision maker is there. I don't, I don't think it will ever be a part, it seems like a reason.
But if you just put to grade one unless the district in collaboration with the parent decides.
I don't, I don't see a principal going against the wishes of the parent.
Yeah.
Either.
At, at all in this, so I don't wanna overthink it either, so.
Yes, there's like a hint of dating.
Well, we also wanna make sure, like, the principal, the teachers, what was doing the assessment, feel, they feel that somebody, a child is developmentally appropriate for first grade. And what is the reason that family doesn't?
I just wonder if you could just say, will be assigned to grade one unless it is deemed that kindergarten is more developmentally appropriate.
I mean, it's.
Well, that's what they need.
But even, but even if we.
If we do assessment, the child say that, well, we think that child is in first grade, the parent says, no, I wanna be a pro player, so I wanna stay back a year.
That's not a good reason, that's not, that's not a good reason.
That's gonna be true in many different iterations, that's all I'm saying, so, right? So, like, I don't know, I don't know that we can account for all of them here, so should it just be like, unless.
So we wanna straighten this in the sole judgment, blah, 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 and just say, unless kindergarten is a more developmentally appropriate placement.
As determined by.
I guess, I'm just, all I'm saying is, I don't know that it's useful to do a determined by because there are so many permutations of that determined by.
So we just say, unless kindergarten is more.
Yeah, and then, and the assumption is.
Figure it out, case by case.
The assumption is it would be the school and the parent, and if that can't be resolved, then it would come to central office, that's all I'm saying.
I think that's a, I think that's a, I think that's a.
But otherwise, it's good, I like that you, uh, were able to incorporate other stuff from other districts, I think it makes it a stronger policy.
I think we should make it on or before September eight in both places.
On or before, right, yeah, on or before.
Okay.
So we're gonna vote on it tonight?
Yeah, can we vote on it, even though we're still maybe closing to adjustments?
Yeah, as amended.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the policy J D V entrance age as presented and amended.
I think it's just that.
Oh, as, as amended.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, uh, we have some minutes from back in the past, December twenty, December sixteenth. Questions or anything anyone noticed about? Not, we'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Any more?
We have one.
Oh, we just did the one.
It wasn't shared, there's one, and one from last week.
Okay.
There's one from last week, from January ninth, for three hundred forty six thousand eight hundred forty two dollars, it was all on last week. Um, primarily special education placements, uh, new refrigerator, a lot of tough things to do.
Uh, no correspondences that I'm aware of, any other business? Future agenda items?
Um, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what to do about that with this information, but, um, it did come before capital planning that the South Shore Vocational Technical High School is up for a MSBA grant for a new building. And all nine towns have to vote on the same day, Saturday, January twenty fifth, yeah, by ballot.
Yeah.
Um, and so I just say that to say, as a place to give information, um, it's something that we want people to know about. Um, you know, uh, capital planning voted to not take a position on it mostly because they didn't really need to, but I know the select board and the advisor council both voted unanimously in favor of, um, moving this forward, and I know one of the, as opposed to the elementary school, um, because it's shared across nine towns, the cost per household in September is about a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a year, um, which is very low, obviously. Um, and so, similar to, um, Hathley and Cushing, the buildings, you know, from the nineteen sixties, it's very outdated, they've done all they can with it. And the new building would be, uh, would enable them to open a few more pathways at the Hope Tech, and since we sent kids there, it feels like it's something that we should talk about, but I wasn't sure where on the agenda, so.
I think that's a great, great.
I think there was, there's a great graphic for situat, the cost for, um, the tax impact.
Yes, yeah.
Better than, better than my elementary school.
And you've mentioned the calendar.
I do, I wanna, just wanna do the calendar. Uh, it's like one of those things we hear, it's like one of those things we hear about, that people are like, let's just tap, so it's happening.
But, yeah, but, yeah. It's the next meeting, great.
Yeah, exciting. Super excited. It's one of those things you get asked about all the time, because it's camp choosing.
All the time.
It's camps, it's vacations, all of these things people are planning right now, so, yeah.
Alright, if nothing else, take a motion to adjourn here tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight oh eight.
All in favor?
Aye.